Tonight's Lakewood City Council meeting for April 6, 2016. Please rise with the flag of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the ball.
Anderson.
President.
Bullock.
Here.
Juris.
Here.
Mattigan.
Here.
Marx.
Here.
Howlin.
Here.
O'Leary.
Here.
Reading and disposal of the minutes of the regular reading of council held March 2, 2016.
Move to adopt without the necessity of a reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And the ayes have it.
Reading and disposal of the minutes of the regular reading of council held March 16, 2016.
Move to adopt without the necessity of a reading. All those in favor?
Second.
I'm sorry, is there a second? There's a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions?
Stand.
One abstention. Thank you. Madam Clerk? Item 101.
Item 1, Committee of the Whole Report Regarding March 5, 9, 12, and 16th, and April 6, 2015, Committee Meetings Addressing Letter of Intent Submitted to Lakewood City Council by the Lakewood Hospital Association, the Lakewood Hospital Foundation, and the Cleveland Clinic.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the public and colleagues, I have all the, all my reports for these meetings written up, and will go through the highlights of them, they will be posted, and I will have copies left in your boxes for either later tonight or tomorrow morning, but I'll begin with March 5 and just give the highlights of them, and I know that most of the members, most of the public who are here tonight were also at most of these meetings, but in any case, I think it's important to remind everybody, including ourselves, that we have extensive notes on these meetings, and all the meetings are public, and the records will remain in our files for now and forever. So the March 5 meeting allowed Lakewood residents who serve on the Lakewood Hospital Association to share their views on the decision to approve the LOI, Letter of Intent. Each member considered a huge volume of data and research over the months that led to the creation of the LOI. All council members were present. Lakewood Hospital Association members, including Ellen Grinsois, Joe Givens, Bill Gordon, Horton, Ken Haber, Rebecca Patton, Kurt Braski, and Kathy McGory were present. There was a review of current hospital trends in outpatient services, and a discussion on approaches to medicine and wellness. There was vibrant participation from the members of the public in the Lakewood community. March 9, Committee of the Whole focused on transportation challenges that citizens may face if the nearest hospital were located outside of the city. All council members were present, and presenters included Glenn Coyne, the Director of the Cuyahoga County Planning Commission, Tony Jelsimino, the Director of Lakewood Human Services, and Fire Chief Scott Gilman. Both Directors and the Chief presented data and narrative about the need for transportation, not just for those who had a medical need, but for citizens generally, and it won't surprise most of us to know that RTA came up quite a bit. The meeting, the city, I'm sorry, the Committee of the Whole on March 12 was organized to allow people an opportunity to offer alternatives to the LOI. All members of council were present. Guest speakers included Dr. Terry Kilroy and State Senator Michael Scindel. Members of the public, Mayor Summers and Directors attended, and it was a vibrant and engaging conversation. The meeting on March 23 focused on how change in healthcare delivery may impact the human service needs of the community and our local providers' ability to meet those needs. Presenters included Mary Ann Crafton, who led the city's Human Services Summit in 2012, Lakewood Human Services Director Toldy Jelsimino, and Lee Elmore, the Director of North Coast Ministry of Lakewood, North Coast Health Ministry of Lakewood. All three presenters discussed human services needs and how they vary, and what data and considerations for comprehensive approach to healthcare meant. Also discussed, there was a vibrant discussion on seniors' needs and those segments of the community who need to have better access, and then Ms. Elmore provided an overview of health services offered by North Coast Health Ministries, and led a discussion about the national and local trends, and how they were mirrored here in Lakewood for not only the poor, but the working poor. Members of the public were at that meeting as well. On March 30, 2015, that meeting focused on the development of business, on the possibilities of development and new business if Lakewood indeed experienced an evolution to a family healthcare clinic. Presenters included Patty Ryan, the Executive Director of Lakewood Chamber of Commerce, Ian Andrews, the Executive Director of Lakewood Alive, and our own Lakewood Development Director Drew Siley. All members of council attended, as did Directors Pay, Jelsimino, Chief Gilman, the Mayor, and many members of the public. Ms. Ryan read a letter and made a presentation about the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce opinion and some suggestions. Mr. Andrews shared the views of Lakewood Alive and that the potentially radical shift to Lakewood's downtown will impact residents and businesses, and Lakewood Alive members wanted to be a part of the future and the decision-making process, and Mr. Ian, for the record, I think all of council received it, sent a letter the next day, which we all had in our boxes and in our email. And then Director Siley presented context for consideration of new buildings and possibly different ideas for the footprint. I think he got us all used to his favorite phrase, now our favorite phrase, is we are reserving as many options as possible for the city of Lakewood. Additional comments and materials are available online, and with that, I move to receive and file this written communication.
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes. Tonight, there was a second, there was yet another Committee of the Whole, and I only have a verbal report on that. All members of council were in attendance, although Councilman Bullock joined us a little bit later, the Mayor, Director Butler, members of the public were there. We took tonight, we took the opportunity tonight to review how this body was feeling about the amount of information we've taken in, about the work we've done for the past nine and a half weeks, about where we needed to go. We determined that while we don't have all of our questions asked or answered, and really we don't have all of our questions formulated, we are on a path to continue to get the answers we need. We have hired counsel, and with counsel's help, which is Thompson Heine, Thompson Heine, we will feel comfortable working concurrently on gathering more information and begin to set up a framework to make decisions for our future and the future of healthcare in Lakewood. I move to receive and file that oral communication for tonight's Committee of the Whole. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 2, Ordinance 4314-A, and the ordinance amending Ordinance 4314 adopted December 15, 2014, for the purchase of repair, maintenance, and operating supplies, services, and equipment as authorized by the 2015 Appropriation Ordinance and the Administrative Code of the City with the lowest and best bidder or bidders or as otherwise provided by law, placed on first reading, and refer to the Finance Committee 31615.
Move to place on second.
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing done, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Pardon me, um, Ms. Smith, can you tell me if anyone has signed up to speak on any of these? Sorry, thank you. I didn't think of it.
Item 3, Ordinance 1415, and ordinance amending Section 110502 of the zoning code by changing and revising the zoning map with respect to certain property as set forth and described as a portion of 14823 Lake Avenue from single-family high-density to single and two-family, placed on first reading, and refer to the Planning Commission 31615.
Move to place on second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes.
Item 4, Ordinance 1515, and ordinance amending Section 112107, 112307, 112707, minimum yard requirements for principal buildings of the codified ordinances to adjust the necessary variances required for air conditioning units located at each side yard, placed on first reading, and refer to the Planning Commission 31615.
Move to place on second.
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes.
Item 5, Ordinance 1615, and ordinance to amend Section 110302 definitions and 113307 measurement of building height, to further define roof height within the code, placed on first reading, and refer to the Planning Commission 31615.
Move to place on second.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes.
Item 6, Ordinance 1715, and ordinance amending Section 116103T supplemental regulations for specific uses to allow outdoor dining year-round where the patio is located fully on private property, placed on first reading, and refer to the Committee of the Whole 31615.
Move to place on second, and for the public, we hope to address that on the Committee of the Whole on April 20.
Second.
Is there discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes.
Item 7, Communication from Councilmember Marx Regarding Clothing Donation Boxes.
Thank you. Dear colleagues, it has come to my attention that the clothing donation boxes located throughout the city are not necessarily placed with approval of the owner of the property on which they stand, are not registered with the city, and are not maintained with regularity, and often do not have the owner's contact information visible on the container. I would like the council to consider legislation regulating the placement and registration of the clothing donation bins located within the city of Lakewood. Without regulation, we could find numerous clothing bins on one location and throughout the city. When these containers are not maintained or emptied in a responsible manner, it reflects negatively on the character of our neighborhoods. Request move to receive and file?
Yes, second. Is there discussion? All those in favor?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I simply want to express support for Councilwoman Marx's topic of her letter. I've experienced this very problem a number of years ago in War II at the time, and it was unclear in this particular boxes case who put it where and who was maintaining it, because the current owner had bought the property from a previous owner who had set it all up, and nobody was tracking it. I wonder if we ought to be more explicit in how we permit and regulate these up to and including a potential conditional use permit perhaps in our planning code? I don't quite know, I haven't thought it through, but I do agree, there's a number of these boxes all over, not just in Lakewood, and it's not always A, maintained, or B, held in a quality position, and C, there may be too many of them.
Right.
So I appreciate your attention to this.
Thank you.
All right, so, I agree, and thank you, so, receive and file and move to Public Works? Oh, rules and ordinances, I think we talked about, yes, let's move this to rules and ordinances so we can begin to discuss it and develop legislation if necessary. Any further discussion? And that is seconded, is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes.
Item 8, Communication from Councilmember Marx Regarding Maureen Dossel to CAC.
Dear members of council, it's my pleasure to appoint Maureen Dossel to the CAC Committee for the term beginning January 1, 2015, and ending December 31, 2015. I appreciate Ms. Dossel's continued service to Lakewood, and I know she will remain a valuable asset to the committee. Move to receive and file.
This second, is there discussion on the motion to receive and file? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes.
Item 9, Communication from Councilmember O'Leary Regarding St. Charles Green.
Councilwoman O'Leary is going to read a verbal correspondence and then submit it so that it will be available to the public online. Councilwoman O'Leary?
Thank you. Dear council colleagues, tonight, I'm introducing a measure that would officially designate St. Charles Green as a city park. As many of you may know, St. Charles Green has long been held out by the city for public use, and Lakewood already maintains it for the many members of our community who appreciate its proximity, beauty, and serenity. This action would serve to secure St. Charles Green as an important asset for downtown Lakewood, its businesses, their employees, and the residences, and the residents who live around it. Designating St. Charles Green as a park will preserve the character of the bell St. Charles neighborhood, ensure that we properly incorporate this important public space into our parks' plan and community vision, and perhaps enable us to pursue additional sources of funding for future improvements. I look forward to our city taking this unique and important step to protect, enhance, and expand our public green space offerings in Lakewood. Yours in service, yours truly. I would move that this communication be received and filed.
Second.
The motion to receive and file and communication, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 10, Ordinance 1815, and ordinance dedicating certain parcels of land located at 1347 St. Charles Avenue, known as St. Charles Green, as a public park to be designated as blank part.
Move to place on first reading and refer to the Planning Commission.
Second.
Is there any discussion on that?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bullock.
I also want to thank Councilwoman O'Leary for her proposal, which I am very favorably inclined towards. The, the green has been always a wonderful space to decompress from the very busy downtown of Lakewood. There's a lot of character and value it adds to the surrounding properties, there's a lot of very nicely mature trees there, and I have no reason to believe we wouldn't continue to enjoy those things as a green, as an informal green space. However, to designate it as a park could increase or improve our intentional planning and thought and investment and design of that space so that it's more functionally used compared to what we're enjoying today. So I look forward to our discussion, thank you.
Thank you. That motion, further discussion? All those in favor, send it to the Information.
Aye.
Behind those opposed? That motion passes.
Item 11, Communication from Finance Director Pay Regarding 2015 Capital Lease Authorization.
Thank you, Madam President. Dear members of council, attached is an ordinance to enter into an agreement with a yet-to-be-named financial institution for the 2015 capital program that will finance the following: police vehicles, five mark, one undercover, super flow monitors, 35 meters, a hook lift truck, a citywide photovoltaic system, a fire engine, and the final phase of the water meter replacement program. I respectfully request that this be placed on first reading and refer to the Finance Committee. The financial institution receiving the newest lease award known at that time. Sincerely, Chairman Page, Director of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster sitting here, for Director Page. Move to receive and file that communication?
Second.
On that motion to receive and file the letter, is there discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes.
Item 12, Ordinance 1915, and ordinance authorizing the Director of Finance to enter into equipment leases in forms approved by the Director of Law on behalf of the city of Lakewood.
Move to place on first and refer to the Finance Committee.
Second.
On that motion, is there discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes.
Item 13, Communication from Public Works Director Ben Overgody, Lakewood Signals Phase Five Franklin Moyer.
Director, madam.
Dear members of council, this is the preliminary legislation for the final of five phases of the Lakewood Traffic Signal Improvement Program. This phase will replace the signals at 13 intersections from Ridgewood to Riverside along Hilliard and Franklin. Project is partially funded by congestion mitigation and air quality funds and administered by the Ohio Department of Transportation. Current cost share of the normal construction items is 80% CMAC funds and 20% city funds. The legislation states the city will pay for 100% of the design cost and any signals that are determined to be unnecessary by the Federal Highway Administration standards. After initial traffic signal counts that have already been done and warrant studies completed, the only intersection that is currently under review for possible removal is the intersection of Hilliard and the North Marginal. The final decision on this intersection has not yet been made. Final legislation for this project will follow near the end of 2015 when construction cost estimates are available from the designer. Thank you.
Move to receive and file the communication?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Joe, what will you do when the final phase is over?
Find something.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 14, Resolution 880215, a resolution authorizing the city of Lakewood to participate in the upgrade and interconnected traffic signals along Madison Avenue in the city with the Ohio Department of Transportation.
Move to refer this resolution to Public Works.
Second.
On that motion, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 15, Liquor Permit Application for Transfers to Templars Lakewood Doing Business as Detroit or 14701 Detroit Avenue from New Town Lakewood, same address.
Councilwoman Bullock?
Thanks, Madam Chair. We are in receipt of the liquor permit review and report by both the Police Department and the Law Department, and we found no statutory reason to object. I defer to the War II Councilman in moving toward this, this business would reside however. So, Mr. O'Leary?
Thank you, Councilman Bullock. I'm certainly appreciative of the work that went into creating this report and the concerns that it raises, but likewise, find no statutory reason to object. Thank you.
Therefore, Madam Chair, I move to file with no objection.
Second discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes.
Item 16, Liquor Permit Application for Transfers to Lakewood Village 13343741 Madison Avenue from B&amp;B Tavern Doing Business as Lakewood Village, same address.
Councilwoman Bullock?
Thanks, Madam Chair. We are also in receipt of a liquor permit report or application, review and report by the law departments, and also, those reports show no statutory reason to object. Councilman Juris of War III is a representative of that neighborhood for that business, so I defer to his views on this matter.
I'm in agreement.
Okay, so therefore, I move to file with no objection.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes. That brings us to the conclusion of the agenda. There are three people signed up to speak, Mrs. Gillespie. Mrs. Gillespie.
Thank you, and I know you know this by now, but your name and address for the record, thanks.
Yes, Judy Gillespie, 23003 Chandler Lane, Homestead Falls. I just didn't realize I'd be up here this quick, and that this kind of work can get done this quickly, I'm impressed, you guys, good job. First and foremost, I would like to thank the media that has been covering all of the LOI, you know, conversations and concerns and public comments and everything. I think it's been handled very, very well, and I always believe in putting a positive out before I put a negative, because of the Sun Post, I realized that the written print is not infallible, and certain words are put in when other words should have been used, but I know that one article in the Sun Post this past Thursday that I read referred to Cleveland Clinic renting Lakewood Hospital, and I know that that was really an appropriate word to put in print, but because I believe there's more public attention to this whole situation, it's just so important that if the reporters are going to quote what the relationship is between the clinic and Lakewood Hospital, that they at least get the right verbiage, you know, they're not renting Lakewood Hospital, and I hate for somebody who's now starting to read and get caught up in it, would say, "Uh-oh, what do you mean they're renting Lakewood Hospital?" And I think, as I've gotten involved myself, some of the terminology isn't clear to me, and I have to revisit who's doing what and what their role is, and try to keep everything straight, but, but again, I'm hoping that more of the residents start paying attention, and I think the mayor's been very clear to say that nothing has been decided yet, and that's encouraging to me, that the residents don't feel that it's a done deal, that there are opportunities yet to remain, and so I'm just encouraging my ex-friends and neighbors, not that they're ex-friends, it's just that I don't live here anymore, get involved and pay attention, and walk with you guys so that you guys can make the right choice for everybody concerned. My second question is to Mayor Summers, I just, in the process of finding out and looking through pages and going online, I understand that the building on Hilliard that used to be a theater is owned by a man that is alive and well, and capable of taking care of his property, as I was for my property for 46 years. I was responsible for my property, so I had to take care of it, but for some reason, I'm understanding, looking in past newspaper articles, that for whatever reason, and I'm not clear why the city of Lakewood is now trying to, at some point, there was a $700,000 figure quoted about what it would cost to get this down, because now there's asbestos identified in it, and blah, 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 but the man is still alive, and in the article that I read, he actually said, "Well, he was going to revisit it, maybe he wanted to do something more with it, and he wanted to try something different," and I'm thinking, "You never came to my rescue when I needed help at my house." So I'm wondering, why as a, as a, as a mayor of a city that has so many immediate needs, would ever be caught up in a man who has ignored legal requests to show up in court, ignored his responsibilities to submit his documentation, his response to questions that you might have had from him legally and whatever? I always thought that when I had somebody approach me legally to say, "Hey Judy, I need these answers and I want them now," that I didn't have options to say, "No, Mr. Summers, I'm just not going to do that," you know, and then you say, "Oh, it's okay Judy, I'm going to take it down anyhow, so I'll take care of it." So I don't know where it's at, and I'm curious as to what's at this point being decided for a man who's not living up to his responsibility?
Our first obligation is to the safety of citizens of Lakewood, and in this particular instance, Hurricane Sandy ripped a big hole in the road to that building, and that was two years ago, and as a consequence, the building is fundamentally destroyed internally and structurally at risk. We took down at our own expense, unfortunately, a pyramid that would cause endangering pedestrians, and you've either you know that we've actually sealed off the sidewalk in front of the building, because we believe it's a public safety threat. We have the authority to take these actions when we believe we have, in this instance, where public, it's in fact at risk, we have declared this building to be such a case. The owner of this building is alive, but he's been derelict as doing for a very long time. It's a very large building, he has no, he does not demonstrate any capacity to address the issues, although he keeps indicating that he has a desire to do so, but the fact is that the building continues to deteriorate, and we cannot put our safety, our public safety at risk, and so we're taking what action is appropriate, but unfortunately, it's very expensive. The building, regretfully, needs to come down. It, at one time, was a wonderful building, it was designed in an atmospheric theater design, and the ceiling is actually a painted sign of the heavens and the sky, unfortunately, it's all been destroyed, mold. Unfortunately, it's all been destroyed, mold and other elements that make it very dangerous to go in. We're worried about how we would take down such a building safely without putting the workers at risk. So it's not something we're happy about. It's not something we seek out. This one sort of comes at you because of its threat.
I'm not understanding... Thank you, Mrs. Gillespie.
But I'm still not understanding why it's a "we," meaning you representing the City of Lakewood, in regards to a man who owned the building and when the roof fell in because of the storm, that that was his insurance problem, his responsibility, and yet you went in to do the work. Did he reimburse you for the work, for the money you spent?
You know, thank you, Mrs. Gillespie. I appreciate very much you bringing this up, and I think Mayor, I'll give you another chance to answer, and then if you'd like to stick afterwards and ask more questions, you're more than welcome to. And we look forward to it.
This particular owner has not demonstrated any financial capacity to address these needs.
Thank you.
We do have a lien on his property.
Thank you. And just to be very clear, the City of Lakewood is the landlord for the Cleveland Clinic. So I think, however you interpreted what was written, perhaps you didn't interpret it correctly, but we are the landlord of Lakewood Hospital.
Yeah, they lease the property.
Thank you. So what you read was correct?
The Cleveland Clinic?
Yes, they lease Lakewood Hospital from the city. Yes, yes.
They're not hired to manage with the hospital?
We're, keep coming to the meetings. There's lots more, lots more to be learned. Thank you. We're glad you're here. Next person, Victor Jason. Hi, Mr. Jason. Come on up. And if you would formally your name and address. Thank you.
Victor Jason, twenty-sixty-two Brown Road. A lot of things I like to talk about, but right now, for a long time, I've been trying to get in touch with the engineer. I go upstairs, I ask, everything, "Oh, he's busy this and that, that and that." And about a week ago, I go over there, he's in a meeting, and I said, "Well, I'll wait." And soon as I said that, "Get out of this office, or I'll call the police to have you arrested." That's what she told me. And in the past, I've asked for his phone number, I call, nothing. I wanna talk to the engineer. But you know, loop prists, "Oh, they're not up to date." Well, the things I know, they can be up to date. I could show them. But right now, you know, years ago, when people having trouble, the city said, "Now notice is what to put in your basement. A check valve, it lets the water out, but won't let any come in." It's a mechanical thing, and people have cost, I know, one, two thousand dollars. But invert plates, that's a twelve-by-twenty-four-inch plate that separates our sewer system. And there's notices, "Oh, when they pop out, we don't replace them." What do we do? Try to convert the whole city into self-cleaning catch basin here? Well, you know, years ago, it's been stated, combined sewers are improper situation. Someday, we will be forced to correct. Well, that's the time, a couple of years later, a sixty-inch on Lincoln, thirty-inch on Mars, combined storm. But right now, invert plates. Now, I've talked about this before, that just like what they tell you, you put in your basement, it opens up, lets the water out, then it closes, won't let any sewer come back. Why don't we do that with the invert plate instead of popping? Because you get these high-rise apartment houses, maybe five people or so for ten minutes and taking showers, that puts a load on it, where things, it pops them out. Why don't you just open it up, a check relief valve, so it closes? Because right now, since they've been sweeping our streets, I can honestly say, we're in our eighth year, no problem. Between Butts Road and Warner Road, south to Madison, it used to be worse than flooding. Now, no problems because they're sweeping the streets. But they're sweeping, believe me, maybe eighty percent of it, but cars are parked by the side, they can't get everything, and it rains at nighttime. I see where, boy, it's boiling, six o'clock or so, it rain at night, oh, it's flooded. And the same climate, church still having trouble with water in the basement. Do they?
I'm not sure anymore.
Well, I know why, believe me. But again, why don't we cut it, it's a hole there, let it pop out, raise up, and it will, and no layers or no solids would go in there. But no, right now, so it pops out because of five minutes or something, pressure's great, so then, oh, it's all right. Five, ten years later, is that the problem? Would it could have been solved? You gotta have a relief valve because the pressure does go. You know, two apartment houses, and like I say, one time when you're contracting, working on Lauren Road, combined sewer over there, she said, "Well, as long as it doesn't rain at five o'clock, it's all right." And I asked her, "What's five o'clock got to do with it?" She said, "Well, that's what people are home taking showers." So it causes things to happen, which is true. Lot of water goes there. Pop it out, make a pressure, and make it out stainless steel, one-eighth of an inch of nothing, just pop it out and fold back up, and it keep the solids coming out. Or it's been stated, rainwater is needed to flush out our system. That's something in the past. So why not take an invert plate, drill half-inch holes or something, the whole thing, so you keep the heavy stuff from floating into our sewers? It's simple. Something should do, like I say, I try to talk to the engineer because I'm used to talking engineers, because I can honestly say, I was in charge of the tank plant, we were making the tank to float, made out aluminum, but they did float, and I got, like I say, I built a machine there at sixteen feet low, because I liked it. But this business right now, like I say, I wanna talk to the engineer, it's simple, but I can't do it.
Thank, Mr. Jason, thank you. If you wouldn't, I always appreciate when you come in here, and I know you have dialogue with our office regularly. If you'd just hang around a little bit after the meeting, I want to ask you. Thank you.
Let me tell you, I took a shower yesterday, I forgot to clean my ears. Honestly, God, I'm having trouble.
I said, "I thank you for coming here. I appreciate that you're here, and I know you regularly have dialogue with the council office." So if you would just hang around a little bit after tonight's meeting, just hang around so we can try to...
Who are we gonna talk?
Well, me.
I'll talk to you?
Thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Really, really, you know, just a couple of weeks ago, I'm on Madison, where I was working for a long time, I'm watching over there, all of a sudden, the workers, our instructions from Joe Beno is, "If you come there, call the police to have you arrested."
Well, hang around, just hang around, and thank you. Thank you for being here. Thanks.
Well, I'll talk to you, like I say.
Thank you, Mr. Jason.
And I'm gonna start drawing pictures about everything. Matter of fact, I still got some here right here to show you.
You shared them with us before. You're great. Thank you.
Oops, where's my touch? I'm gonna watch this thing, man, I left it in the tray and everything.
Well, we'll always get it back to you. Thank you. Bill Rice, Mr. Rice, hi. And Mr. Rice, just your name and address for the record.
Sure. I'm Bill Rice. I live at seventeen four one five Shaw Avenue, and I've lived there for almost ten years, over ten years this summer. I've come to this podium once before, that was probably nine years ago, to talk about the same thing I'm here to ask about this evening, which is rail traffic. I read with interest, it was either late last fall or early this winter, that the rail traffic was going to increase some threefold in the near future. It seems like that increase is underway. I haven't exactly been counting the trains that have been going by, but it seems to have increased some. And also, I really perked up when I read Mayor Summers' comments that we might think about doing something, about establishing a quiet zone, which would entail certainly some investment in new gates and so forth. And I haven't been paying that much attention since I was away for about six weeks this winter. But I've come back, and I'm still very interested in that. I have yet another tenant, I own a duplex, it's right up against the tracks. I have yet another tenant who's saying that they're leaving, and one of the reasons that they're leaving is because the trains are so loud. It's not their sole reason, but I'm sure that's something that they're gonna be happy to get away from. And myself, the trains bother me an awful lot, too. They just, they wake me up at night. People say you get used to them. Whoever's gotten used to those trains is evidently made of sterner stuff than I, because I have not gotten used to them yet. And I just wanted to see if there was an update on whether we might move in that direction of a quiet zone at some point. If you do, I'll be right there with you.
Thank you.
Be happy to comment. By the way, you may recognize Bill's voice. WCJ Idea Stream, a longtime commentator. As soon as you mentioned it, you heard it, so we're glad to have Bill around here. The rail traffic in the early nineteen nineties averaged about twenty-six to thirty trains a day. In that era, there were two sets of tracks on each way. And due to the merger of Conrail and Norfolk Southern, Congressman Kucinich was able to leverage that merger by diverting a significant amount of that rail traffic south of us. And our, due to industrial volume issues, our actual train experience in the last four or five years has been two trains a day, which is pretty light, like a burst of twenty-six to thirty. Norfolk Southern said they're now experiencing congestion on their main lines, and therefore would like to increase rail traffic to six trains a day. If this is your correct, three, three times two is six. We believe they actually have the right under agreements to go to thirteen trains a day. And working jointly with the cities of Rocky River and Bay Village in particular, we're seeking clarification from Norfolk Southern about their intentions and clarifications of the status of an agreement that was signed back in the late nineties. There's some differences of opinion between Norfolk Southern and our communities as to whether or not that effect, the date is still viable. The next step is to meet with the Norfolk Southern senior leadership in Washington, D.C., Law Director from Bay Village, Law Director Ebert is arranging that meeting. So we're moving ahead at frankly, a fairly slow pace to clarify what we think could happen and what our rights are under our current agreements. I think if you take the second hundred-year view of Lakewood, and if you believe that rail traffic is gonna continue to be part of our experience in that second hundred years, and that if we had some clarity as to the volume and forecast, we'd say, geez, maybe it's time to do something differently than we did in our first one hundred years. Quiet zones are actually expensive. It's about a million dollars crossing, and it's basically double gated on each side, so no one can drive around in these gates. And we have twenty-six crossings. So that's an awful lot of money, but if you take a deliberative approach, and let's say we did one a year, twenty-six years from now, we'd be happy to make some progress. So we don't have any specific plans to do that, but I think we need to think a little more productively about how we might approach this in a meaningful way. By the way, if you think of gates, that's sort of an old analog way, there's some very interesting designs out there that use laser lights to create sort of a virtual barrier that you probably could drive through, but nobody in their right mind would, the way it looks, it's much cheaper, probably more effective, but it's new. And so maybe technology will allow us to lower that million-dollar price, to have something that's safe, and I think we're obligated to take a close look at trying something differently in there. If we could do a third of the city, the moment, if we did it in a concentrated way, where you started at one end and moved deliberately across the city, the moment a train hit the beginning of that quiet zone, it would stop blowing its horn and would cease to blow through the remainder of that question. So every set of crossings we could cobble together would be an advantage certainly for those neighborhoods. Although I think it's fair to say that all of us hear a train whistle everywhere wherever it's blown in Lakewood. Some a little more intensely, it's near you, but if you're on the east end of Lakewood and a train hits the first western, western crossing, you hear it, especially at three in the morning, the ones we all hear in particular. There is one that goes short about three in the morning, pretty regularly, I would say. So I think the, I wish I could say, though, that we had more definitive plans, but shared with you at least how I'm thinking about how we need to approach this.
Okay. Thanks very much. You know, it's the horns that bug me. It's not so much the rumble, I can sleep through that, but boy, those horns are really loud. And if you don't believe it, you're welcome to come over and spend the night at my place.
Madam Chair.
Sometimes they are more than obnoxious.
Thanks, Madam Chair, and thanks, Mr. Rice and Mayor Summers. I'd like to second the mayor's motion to create a quiet zone in Lakewood. I think you've hit the nail on the head, Mayor, that if we take a long-term view, even expensive projects with a high capital investment cost can be achievable. We have to do a budgeting analysis, but that's precisely what this council body has the ability to do, is to evaluate priorities compared to resources over time. So if we, in conjunction with the community, decide that this is important, it's achievable. I don't know if it would take five years, maybe it would take twenty-five years, but twenty-five years is better than never. And as the mayor suggests, it could be possible to section portions of the length of the railway such that we at least attain a quiet zone in a certain portion first while we're working on the others. It's also possible, in addition to laser gates, which I've never heard of before, to create a cul-de-sac out of the street. And I understand that was discussed in the nineties or eighties under previous mayors, looked at, and I think that that would be a dimension of the conversation that would need to be a lot of resident input, there would need to be traffic flow analysis to understand the impacts or not. That could be an option. And then if there was essentially no crossing in a certain street, there's removing the cost of that crossing. And I even understand that the, there's a state railway fund which essentially incents communities to do that, and they would give you funds for closure of a certain intersection or crossing so that you could invest that in a second crossing and thereby improve safety. So those are options. I don't know if that would fit, certainly that would be a very important, you know, dimension of any quiet zone. But I do think this is worthwhile, and I'd like to acknowledge former council colleague, Councilwoman Smith, who worked and focused on this issue, I know, during her time in service. Last thoughts on this. Two things, one thing has changed, one thing hasn't changed on rail traffic. The thing that's changed is that the horn volume has increased over time. And I think one of Director Beno's colleagues, Bill Corrigan, made that point when we had the Norfolk Southern gentleman here. The federal railway safety rules have been in place for decades, and certainly the federal government, not cities and municipalities, have say so over this issue. But what has changed over the decades is that their horn volume has gone up. Their horn volume is designed to penetrate a car which has silencing features with the air conditioner blasting and the stereo at maximum. Even in that extreme case scenario, the car potentially crossing the railroad would hear the horn and get out of the way or reverse or something. That's a louder horn for that car in recent years compared to thirty, forty years ago. So the impact on residents has become more acute, even though those twenty-six crossings have been around for some time. The thing that hasn't changed, of course, is that having so many crossings so close to so many of our properties would be a payoff and a benefit. So if it does indeed cost a million a crossing or some similar figure, that's certainly expensive, but the value of such an investment would be very significant, because if you compare that to, say, a more industrial district out, where they only have a few homes within ears blast reach, they're only gonna reap so much benefit. We, on the other hand, as you said, Mayor, we can all hear it, some very intensely, some to medium or lower levels of disruption, but that investment of infrastructure would pay off every time a train would pass through a community, potentially multiple times a day. Thanks.
Saved by the bell. Thank you. That was a train. Any further announcements from council? Hearing none. Any announcements from the administration?
Just want to remind us, next Wednesday, April 15, here in this room, we have an opportunity to learn a great deal about the Longus Foundation. We have a facilitator, David Pinter, Professor Kateless Rider, and we also have two great resources from the Deaconess Foundation, St. Luke's Foundation, all of, both of which started similarly to the proposal before us. We'll learn what they can do for us, we'll learn a bit about governance, we'll learn about how these organizations need to be structured and behave so they can get the maximum contribution. It'll be the beginning, the very first step of a fairly, I think, a thorough step to figure out how to make this work in Lakewood. So you will press the word to those who, what could benefit from such a foundation and two who might be interested in getting involved with it. There's many constituencies that would probably benefit, and the leadership of these constituencies are the ones you really want to make sure, show up on this Wednesday. So if in any way possible, you can connect with those folks, would be much appreciated.
Thank you. And-
Just a reminder for everybody, or notification for everyone, we will be having a public works meeting here in the auditorium, so that the members of the committee and the folks that are going to be sticking around for that can get through our agenda quickly and you can keep the conversation so dull roar while we start our meeting here at our conclusion, that would be appreciated. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further business before the council?
Madam Chair. I would just like to make a comment to the mayor. I saw you on TV announcing the new signal that's going to be at Manor Park, and I just wanted to congratulate the city in your hard work in making that happen. I know a lot of people are happy about that. So thank you.
And any further business? Move to adjourn. Those in favor? I, I'm, thank you. Someone's down there.